Good evening. I'd like to call the September 2, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting to order. We will start with the invocation being delivered by County Manager Lance Metzler. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Houston Barrow will lead us in the pledge. If everyone would please rise.
Gathered here today to do the work that you see fit. We have many issues that face the nation, state, and county, but you are just and righteous God that will allow the good outweigh the bad. Please bless the agenda and the Board of Commissioners who will make decisions in the best interest of all citizens. Allow our Commissioners to have the strength and the guidance from you while guiding our county in a better place to live, work, and play. Help us always to remain loyal to you and do your work so that we don't falter to evil ways. Through your precious name, we pray. Amen.
If you please face the flag and render the appropriate salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of tonight's agenda, and we are, after speaking with y'all, removing item 5B with that change of, under the consent agenda. With that change, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Hall.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barrow. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Next is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda, if anybody's got any questions about them, you're welcome to reach out to the County Manager, and he'll be glad, he or his staff will be glad, to forward any information from items under the consent agenda. With that, do we have a motion to approve items under the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Next, we have a presentation and Town Manager from Mayodan, Ms. Melody Shuler, and also our Engineer Bill Lester.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much for hearing our request tonight, and thank you, County Manager, for getting this on the agenda. And so, we continue, we appreciate the county's continued partnership on the Mayodan wastewater treatment plant. There have been several improvements to date that you all have supported us on in bringing it back to where it needs to be functioning at a high standard. As you know, we have a project increasing the capacity of the facility from 3 million gallons per day to 4.5 MGD per day. And so, we are in the process of tentatively awarding a contractor the project. And so, the original low bidder withdrew after the 60-day period. It was actually day 61. They were citing increased costs and tariffs. And so, the second lowest bidder we've confirmed, that one is state utility contractors. They've confirmed that they will hold their bid until September 30 of this year. However, with the cost of it being 16.1 million, just under that, it's placing us over budget by $2 million. And so, what our request of the county is to, if you all would be willing to contribute $2 million towards this project, then to make it whole so that we can continue forward, then what we would do would be allocate to the county 200,000 gallons per day of sewer capacity. And so, what that means is that's in line with the current contract that we have with the county for sewer capacity, which equals out to be about $10 per gallon per day. And so, just a quick reminder of the importance of this project is it helps support the critical investment to meet future and current growth in Mayodan and Western Rockingham County. It also ensures infrastructure capacity for residential, commercial, and industrial development. And so, again, enclosing our partnership is essential to keep this project on track. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions? Just for clarification, just based on the way that was worded, the additional $200,000, I mean, we're already in line to get additional capacity with what we were contributing. So, this is in addition to that additional capacity.
That's correct.
Okay.
If they don't get this contribution, they'll have to put it back out for bid, and the odds that the proposal coming back higher will be very likely.
Yeah. So, ultimately, right now, as it stands, the county would get 7.5 million. Well, I mean, you've paid 7.5 million, and so then this would be adding to that contribution, 200,000 gallons.
Yeah. I think Bill's eyes perked up a little bit.
Your current contract is 1.25 MGD. This will raise it by 200,000 total. So, that would get it to 1.45 total. I think that's...
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hall, did you have a question?
Yeah, and I think you touched on it, but I wanted you to reiterate. The price we're paying for the capacity is in line with what we're currently paying for capacity.
That's correct, yes. So, the amount that you would be paying for the 2,000 gallons per day, which is equating to 2 million, would be $10 per day for the gallons. So, that would be in line with your contract as it stands currently.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You ready to go?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we do have another question.
Just more of a comment. Lance, just for clarification for the benefit of the public, this is not local tax dollars that we're looking at spending. Could you clarify that?
Office of State Budget Management Funds.
Thank you. You may proceed.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the suggestion from the Town of Mayodan.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Barrow. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. All right. Next is public comment. We do have people that signed up for public comment. So, Mr. Manager or Attorney, if you'll read the rules with regards to public comment.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. This period shall not serve as a forum for debate with the Board of Commissioners. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to the staff, the audience, or median. The chairperson shall indeed open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Each citizen shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one or more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. The total amount of time allotted for the public comment period is 30 minutes. Your time will be displayed on the monitor up here in front of you. The time clock will start with three minutes, and unless yielded time to six minutes, you will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield your time, or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairperson know in advance. Speakers will not be able, or not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the County Manager's office. Mr. Chair?
Rick Ziegler.
Mr. Chairman, my three mentions, Doug Isley.
Okay. Doug Isley.
My name is Doug Isley, 1790 Flat Rock Road, Reesville, North Carolina. I rise tonight because the folks of Rockingham County deserves answers. For years, residents have begged for new schools to replace South End and Stoneville Elementarys. South End Elementary is 90 years old, and Stoneville is pushing 80 years old. But this board refused, this board refused to even place this issue on the agenda, even when lottery funds were available back in 2022. Now, in the middle of a political race between Sheriff Sam Page and Senator Field Burger, all of a sudden, construction is an urgency. Suddenly, money is no object. The timing looks like leadership and more like not, looks less like leadership and more like politics. Let's talk about waste and duplication. And first of all, thank you for pulling 5B off, but I was prepared for this. So, in 2024, the school board paid Cropper GIS $57,500 for enrollment facilities and capacity study. This is 102 pages, folks. This is what $57,500 looks like. Tonight, you're proposing, or you were proposing, to pay 1789 Consulting, owned by former Superintendent Rodney Shotwell, $10,000 for essentially the same $57,500 report. That's $67,500 taxpayer money for duplicate studies. Let's talk about conflicts of interest. Mr. Shotwell had been sued by the very school, sued the very school system he now wants to be paid, or was wanting to be paid to evaluate the school. This undermines objectivity. Commissioner Hall owns Sirius Construction, a company that could directly profit from the very projects he votes to fund. That appears to be textbook conflict of interest.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Point of order. I'd like to check with the attorney.
Time to this, since he's interrupting me. He's not supposed to interrupt me.
Mr. Attorney. Am I allowed to vote on things that I have a personal, direct interest in?
You are.
You don't have any personal...
Yeah, I'm keeping an eye on it.
If I own a company and my construction company does it, would I be allowed to vote on it?
No.
So, I couldn't vote on it, so the scenario he's bringing is false.
You could.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's put it back on the clock. And your very rule says that they're not supposed to interrupt me.
Okay. 410.
This contract was buried in the consent agenda, and its routine is considered non-controversial by which y'all state. But the taxpayers see it for what it is, controversial, questionable, and questionable and political. And let's talk about the timeline. Mr. Shotwell's scope of work is dated July 22 in the packet, but the Department of Public Instruction didn't release the grant program requirements until August 18. So, how could the scope possibly meet DPI standards if it was written three weeks before the guidance, written weeks before the guidance was even published? So, I ask you, did the county follow the Brooks Act in qualifications-based selection? Where is the county attorney's conflict review? And this is, and if this is truly non-controversial, why hide it in the consent agenda instead of debating it openly before the public? After this, after reviewing this contract, you tried to hide it in the consent agenda. I remember just a few months ago, after the sheriff announced he was running against Field, this had the appearance that someone on this board started weaponizing county government and audited the sheriff's office contracts. After I did some research in a public records request, I found that, that over the past 27 years, the sheriff office has run these contracts through the county attorneys that you all hired and the fire to find the finance department. Isn't that calling kettle, isn't that the pot calling kettle black? Why are you not holding yourself to the same standards? Rockingham County families deserve more than hidden contracts and election-year maneuvers. We deserve leaders who put students before politics. I'd also like to address gradual corruption in Rockingham County. The phrase "power corrupts" doesn't only apply to dictatorship or kings. In Rockingham County, we see how even a little political power can gradually corrode judgment, priorities, responsibilities to we, the people. Power rarely corrupts all at once. It creeps in slowly. Small compromises, unchecked influence, and cozy relationships with donors become habits. For politicians like you, 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 and you, serving the people becomes secondary to serving themselves and their allies. The danger isn't only external deals or financial gain, it's internal too. Power changes how leaders think. You grow more isolated, convinced of your own importance, and lose empathy for the people you were elected to represent. Without real checks and balances, you act as there is, no consequences. That's why decisions in Rockingham County so often prioritize personal interests, political revenge, or special deals over schools, communities, and taxpayers. When dissent arises, instead of listening, you try to silence it or block it. You men were elected to serve not, you were elected not by me, and some barely elected, but you all were elected, and your actions should show, and your actions show you've chosen power, control, and personal influence instead. Rockingham County voters deserve better, and in March 2026, we, the people, are going to vote two people in that will show better representation. Until then, Mr. Hall, in my opinion, you should apologize to the men in Rockingham County Sheriff's Department for your statement about inmates being pulled of sexual activity.
This reeks of campaigning, which is definitely covered, as I understand it, in the rules of engagement.
Stop the clock.
Keep the clock going.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Also, as it was stated before, I think you should resign, sir. Again, $57,500 for this report that the school board voted on. And by the way, Mr. Hall and Mr. Berger were on the facilities commission and, from my understanding, instructed Ms. Raystraw and Ms. McMichael to do another study. We had already done one $10,000 study in 2022 that showed, went out to 2030 of them.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Jim Fink.
Jim Fink, 405 Wedgewood Court, Eden. Good evening, Commissioners. They say the Rockingham County Commissioners believe in transparency, and I suppose that's true because every time there's a contract, they make it disappear so fast. It's almost like magic. I didn't know it was going to get pulled. This just writes itself, doesn't it? Houdini would be proud of you all. One minute it's there, there's a deal on the table, the next minute, nobody knows where it went, unless you check the fine print six months later. When today's agenda was first posted originally, there were two Commissioners that were unaware of this contract. So, with that being said, my question is, is what is the status of that contract between Rockingham County and Mr. Shotwell's company? Surprise, now we know. So, my question will be, follow-up, is where's that going to pop up later on down the road? We'll wait and see. Now, for transparency, also means being open about problems or plans, but when it comes to things like sexual harassment claims or trips to Maryland for a casino tour, well, suddenly the blinds get pulled, the doors slam shut, the lights go dark, and it's quieter than a church on Monday. If the walls of that boardroom can talk, they probably need a lawyer or two. Well, a good one, anyway. And then there's the misinformation. Commissioners will say one thing on Monday, another thing on Tuesday, and then by Friday, you feel like you're watching a soap opera, except this one, the cliffhanger, is whether the truth will ever show up. Honestly, I've read and heard fortune cookies, read press releases from the Rockingham GOP, or news on CNN that are more accurate. But here's the thing, transparency shouldn't be complicated. We're not asking for state secrets. We're just asking for the basics. What are you doing with our taxpayer money? What deals are you making? Let me say that one again. What deals are you gentlemen making? This information from the county gets, getting the information from the county is so complicated and misrepresented, and please, no plot twists. This is not Netflix. Imagine if your spouse said, "Honey, I'm being transparent. I just signed a contract with your credit card, but I can't tell you what it's for. You'll just have to see what it is when it's delivered." At the end of the day, government works best when people can see what's going on. That means no hiding contracts, no sweeping claims under the rug, and no fairy tale storytelling, just plain facts, simple in English. Because Rockingham County deserves Commissioners who don't just talk about transparency, but actually but actually practice it. And who knows, if they try it, they might find out that honesty really is the best policy. And if not, at least it would save us all from buying extra stethoscopes to listen through the walls. I've asked before, and I'll ask again, Commissioner Berger, I believe that the leadership of this board is poor and doesn't represent the values of Rockingham County, its citizens, and I asked for your resignation one last time. Commissioner Hall, I echo Mr. Isley's comments. I think you owe the sheriff's department and those fine men and women that work there an apology for those comments you made about the jailer and the sexual activity piece. Thank you.
Lynn Knight.
My name is Lynn Knight. I live at 152 Oak Level Church Road in Stokesdale. I'm going to take a little bit different approach to the offer of a contract to Dr. Shotwell for consulting. First of all, Doug didn't mention there was an NC State study before there was the $57,000 Cropper study. My train of thought is that when people order a study, they don't trust their own judgment. Everything that you need to figure out what the schools need is right in front of you. But when you do a study, and then you order a second study, it's usually indicative of the fact that the first study didn't come back and say what you wanted it to say. So, we've had a first study, a second study, and now it appears that Dr. Shotwell would be consigned with taking information and perhaps putting it in a form that you all could understand better. It's not a full study, I don't think. But this undermines our school board. We had a school board that was elected to dismiss, fire, suspend, rid our school system of Dr. Rodney Shotwell. They were elected for that purpose. And for you to come back some years later and try to use him to give you information, to make decisions on what the county needs for the school system, defies logic. It's really mind-boggling to me that Rodney Shotwell would pop up as a consultant for this Board of Commissioners.
So, next, new business. Lance, do you have any items of new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Comments? Commissioner Kellum?
Well, on a lighter note, Friday night lights is up and going. So, that means all the football teams are playing. It's time to go out and support your local schools and watch some football and cheer on your teams. There's also a lot of festivals that'll be starting in September and October. I'd like to see as many people as I could to go out to them and support, and support your local businesses that are there. And I think it'd be a good time. And as fall approaches and the leaves start to change, it's a great opportunity for people to come out and explore our great county and to see what all it has to offer. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hall. Doug Isley.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'm going to reserve comment on some of the things that I've heard. Because it seems that anything that we say is either turned against us or misquoted. I do strongly support the comments about honesty being the best policy. And I do agree that we were elected to serve the people. And we have, and we've been honest. Whether you choose to believe that or you're going to get another consultant to give you an answer that you do like, that's up to you. I realize that's everyone's perspective. Not so much a light note, but a little different note. I'd like to recognize an individual, Justin Thacker, from our finance department, who, along with many other folks over there in various departments, is serving this county extremely well. Now, he had a little backsliding on us, where he considered going elsewhere. But he has redeemed himself by identifying where he prefers to work, and we're glad to have him. And indeed, we're glad to have so many dedicated employees at the county. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize the elected officials we have with us tonight. We have Sheriff Sam Page. We have, from the school board, Philip Butler, Vicky Austin, and Paula Rexstraw. Had some representation for Mayodan tonight. So, we have Mayor Dwight Lake with us. And we have, from the town council, Letitia Gourd. And thank you again, Melody, for the presentation. I'm going to continue to harp on the thing that I've been talking about for the last... A point of clarification. John, are you on the board currently? Okay. John, thank you for being here. Sorry about that.
That was our effort to be totally transparent, John.
So, the thing I want to mention again, here in Rockingham County, we currently have 172 children in foster care, and we have 10 foster families that are licensed through Rockingham County. This is a problem that is bigger than all of us here. And I'm asking, we need your help. We need anybody out there that's willing to open their home to a child. You know, we are at the point where we're having to find foster families outside of the county. So, if children aren't already having a hard enough time being taken from their homes, they're also having to be removed from their social lives and from their schools. So, please, if you are willing, or if you know someone who may be willing, we would love for you to contact DSS and try to help us with this. Search Services will be hosting a trunk or treat on Wednesday, October 29th, at Wentworth Park, where they'll be having information about foster care as well. So, if you would be interested, please contact us. We would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I believe there's another member of the town council back there next to Dwight.
I'm sorry, guys. I'm not used to having this many town council members here. I apologize.
Dwight, Buck Shelton is here.
Sorry, Buck.
Sorry, my eyes can't, I saw John, and then you were behind John. Okay, thank you. You know, sometimes people push narratives and don't let facts get in the way. As far as transparency, Lance, what is the threshold for contracts you can enter into without the board being involved?
I think it's $50,000 or less.
So, you know, regardless of what the people here want to do with the information, there are people at home that care about factual information. And what that means is Lance could have entered into that contract without ever putting anything in front of this board. So, putting it on the agenda was actually being transparent. And Lance, when's the last time, before the submissions now, that we received a grant application from the school? It was right when Stover was hired, is that right?
Sir, for renovations.
On the agenda, and that was for an expansion.
Correct.
And as far as the packet that you received from the school system to try to get on this agenda, could you please describe for the people what was in that packet?
It was a description of each project for Stonsville and the recommendation for the Reevesville School.
How long were those descriptions?
And a blank grant application.
The application didn't even have the county filled in, did it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, when we decide to put things on the agenda that are partially filled out, then we end up with very little information being presented to this board. So, in an attempt for the school system to complete the paperwork and actually give us information, we've talked to the board chair, we've talked to staff with the school system, and they were perfectly fine coming at our next meeting. Is that right, Lance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we do have a closed session item. And so, we would need a closed session motion pursuant to NCGS 143-31811A1 to approve closed session minutes, and 143-31811A3, consult with the attorney regarding case of Melissa, is it Eford? Eford. Eford, as personal rep of the estate. Kyle Barrett Keppley, plaintiff versus Rockingham County Sheriff, Samuel Scott Page, in his official capacity, Captain Marcus Shane Bullins, in his individual capacity, Mark Samuel Martin Jr., in his individual capacity, Warren Spencer Stoltz, in his individual capacity, Reed James Boyd Sr., in his individual capacity, Southern Health Partners Incorporated, Elton Amos Jr., Joanna Peach, and Cheryl Rivera. Do we have that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We go into closed session.
A motion by Commissioner Kellum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barrett. Do we anticipate any action when we come out of closed session, Mr. Attorney? Okay. Welcome to stick around afterwards. With that, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of eye.
Aye.
So, we are in closed session.